To the July 22 Oshkosh Common Council Meeting, please call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Wojciechowski?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Mugrower?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Paul Mary?
Here.
All present.
Councilmember Miller will lead us in the evocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent and serve.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, move to citizen's statements to council. Do we have anyone registered?
Patty Diener.
Patty Diener.
Well, my name is Patty Diener. Welcome to the council. I brought attention to, we had some work done on our road. I don't know if you guys all came out to see what was going on. And it wasn't Mr. Steve, it was the head up engineering over in Woodsville. And I brought it to their attention about a manhole cover. And when they got anything digging out more, there was a lot more problems than what they figured out. So they tried to do the best they can. I did talk to John Patrick, his head personnel. I've known John for a lot of years. Anyway, I welcomed him back again. For a while, he wasn't here, but he came back. And I think that when you come to negotiating with contracts, their staff is short. We had five gentlemen come out and do our road. And I'll tell you, the guys could do the best they could. They had their bosses out there doing what they could. I don't understand because I didn't sit and watch, only seen a little on Congress one day. Well, you know what? It was very quiet in the neighborhood, and I liked it. You know what? I'll stand by my colleagues, colleagues, even if they're not my colleagues. Them people worked hard. And I want you councils to realize, when there's a negotiation coming up, make the opportunity. I don't care if the budget's short or not. If you want to keep employees, you better hang on to them because it's not good. And I bring your attention to the council. I was not aware of something was changed in 2017. My husband and I were here helping someone get a permit and a planning for a fence. And they say the cyclone has been disregarded. That's fine for me. But I look at it this, if you know how to drive, you should be able to handle anything. If you're in a hurry, you're not going to handle everything. So we said, fine. My husband spoke up because he did not know you people changed things on the council. So we're going to get in the process of doing another fence. I was the one that started, my husband and I, and I want people to be happy, I want them to have privacy. And there's sometimes you go through difficult times. And I want the right decision made by you people and not one person. If there's six people involved, don't pick out one. You do them all. And if it's, if it's, it's for the goodness of the city and the goodness of the homeowner. It's not word of mouth saying, I'm going to do this because she don't deserve it, or I'm going to do this because we think it's right. It took me how many years to go out and get 1,000 petitions for a fence? And the council people backed me and my husband 100 percent. And it was the right way. I took a permit, I did the planning, I went through the right channels. Okay, now, if there is a mistake done and somebody has left the department and retired, what do you do? The answer has to come out one way or the other. And then I come to you this evening in regard to, and I'm going to address it to the chief What about all these cycles going around? Electrical bikes? Who's in charge of this? Who gives them the right to speed? Who gives them the right to have this? I thought in certain ways, you've got to have license for certain things. They're not obeying the rules, they're not obeying the laws. And it's not just me to say it. You could be driving, and they think they have the right way over vehicles.
Patty, I'm sorry, did you, can I just ask a clarifying question? Are you talking about scooters or bikes?
No, it's the new bikes that got the motor on.
Oh, the motorized bikes?
And some of these are, some of these are really cranked up. I've seen a gentleman that lives close to me and far away from me. He showed me one that he's paid like $700 for. And you can go without, or you can run it with. But they're in the middle of the lane. Do they belong in the middle of the lane? Do they belong on the outside of the lane? Where do they belong? And then I have one other question and answer. I'm going to address it to the chief and you people. If there's business to be done in the city of Oshkosh, in this building, it needs to stay in this building, and it does not need to have the police involved. There are some cases that police are not to be involved with. Civil matters and different matters. So I am asking you, as a council, whatever's done in this building is done here. Because we have people from the police department coming over here, we have regular people coming over here. And if you want your employees to do what they've been doing, and you don't know about it, John does. And maybe John will sit down and talk with you people. Because in this professional job here, you're working with people all the time. You're here to do a job, and I'm not here to spy, and I'm not here to paddle. But you know what? If I got caught doing it, I would be born, represent, born, done. And tonight, there used to be a gentleman named Bob Peschel on the council. I want to give my sympathy, because Uncle passed away and I just found out two weeks ago. I worked with Larry Peschel, side by side, every day, five days a week.
Patty, can you finish up your comments?
Yep. And I want you to know that I will back my police officers. I will do what I have to do. But I'll tell you right now, we need more police officers, we need more employees, we need a lot. And you guys are going to have to all work together, not just me, and not just the chief, and not just captain, and not the ship commanders. We all got to work together. And I want to say one more thing, I don't know if you heard, but I heard. I heard from somebody that I really loved, didn't care, and I shot. Mark and Sue Piggly Wiggly are retiring. Mark told me the other day. And I wish him the best. I've been a customer when they had their own business and when they were employees. And I want them to know how much I really cared about them, and how much I loved them, and how much I employed it, enjoyed the employees.
Thank you.
Because if it wasn't for them, they would not have this success.
Okay, thank you. So, did you get that list? Just hoping maybe there might be some clarification on that question about the motorized bikes.
On the motorized bikes, there are some issues with that. We've worked with the police department on it. The problem is, very frankly, the law hasn't kept up with the changes in, yep, in, you know, the different types of vehicles that are coming out. And so we are somewhat limited on our ability to regulate them. But it is something that, you know, we're aware of, we've worked with the police department, and they're enforcing what they can enforce.
Well, as I understand it, any bike can take the lane, the road lane, assisted or non-assisted?
Yep.
Okay. But they're also allowed on the sidewalks, so that kind of does get a little bit confusing.
Yeah, and it is something I think that traffic is also looked at, because we did a presentation, it's been a little bit of time ago now, maybe about a year ago. Does that sound about right? I'm not sure. That talked about all the different types, the scooters, the bikes, the electric bikes, everything. So it is something we're on top of, unfortunately, the law isn't really keeping up with it.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we have anyone else registered? Jesse?
Not under general comments.
Okay, we will move on to consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion on consent. All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
New ordinances, the first two new ordinances we have this evening will not be voted on. Number 22331, amend various sections of Chapter 30 zoning ordinance. Plan Commission recommends approval. And city attorney, is this kind of a housekeeping cleanup or for the public?
Yeah, this is something that Mark and I can answer.
Okay, great.
I'll let Mark do it.
Yeah, we haven't done one of these in maybe about a year or so. Typically, we bring forward to council about once a year, updates to the zoning code as staff and the attorney's office work with various sections or state ordinances and laws change. We like to make sure we keep our ordinances up to date as possible, both from a legal perspective of things that change down the state level, and then just making sure our document reflects any changing trends that are going on in the area. So this is kind of a lengthy list of things that have been needed to be updated for about the last year that we're bringing forward.
Thank you. And the next new ordinance is 22332, approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district to suburban mixed-use district with a planned development overlay for properties located west of South Washburn Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. And again, no action on those items. We'll move on to pending ordinances. 22333, approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district to suburban mixed-use district with a planned development overlay for properties located at 350 to 600 South Kohler Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. We have a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on 22333. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
And under new resolutions, we have Resolution 22334, amend hours for Main Street area designated outdoor refreshment area, also known as DORA. Do we have anyone registered to speak on this item?
We do.
If you could give your name and address, please.
Thomas Mittelstadt, 1923 Iowa Street.
Thank you.
I am the owner and operator of MJM Behavioral Health located at 404 North Main Street, and also part of the Breakwater team. In regards to DORA in and of itself, I know people have been saying that this is supposed to be a progressive move on the city's part. There's a lot of people that disagree with that. It's not progressive.
If you could just speak into the microphone.
It's not progress, progressive, it is regressive. We keep pushing the line on what we can do to keep people drinking. And that's part of our culture in Wisconsin. It's been like that for forever. The city is, it does have a bad reputation as being one of the drunkest cities in the United States, along with Wisconsin being one of the drunkest states in the United States. We need to change this. There's really no need for day drinking, so the farmer's market is one of the few family-friendly events that we have in downtown Oshkosh. We'd like it, keep it that way. You know, if people start, start drinking at, you know, 10:00, 10:00 a.m., you know, that could last for a long time, you know. It goes, DORA goes till, what, nine o'clock? So this is not a good idea. It's not going to increase business downtown in the long run. In fact, it's, DORA in and of itself right now is negatively affecting my business because it creates a high-risk situation for my clients to come to my office to get treatment. I'm open until 8:00 p.m. most nights. I do groups in the evening. And one of the groups that I usually do is a relapse prevention group. Now, my clients have to come into a situation where people are drinking up and down the street on Thursday nights. It's not a good situation to tell my clients, yeah, you got to come, come to group at my office, but you got to deal with what's going on downtown. So I will not be offering any relapse prevention groups on Thursday nights, just because it's not ethical for me to do so. I used to be part of the BID as well. I thought this was going to be a good idea. What I found out is the BID is constantly looking for opportunities for people to drink downtown. Now, yes, they do have some family-friendly events that they try to put on, but there's a big difference. I mean, there's a big difference between the amount of events that have drinking as opposed to family-friendly events. I would think that the city would like to promote a healthier city. We have a lot of problems in this city when it comes to drugs and alcohol. I would hope that we would be more recovery-minded when we make decisions. You know, I for one, I'll, you know, I'm going to be keeping an eye on what's going on with DORA. And there are a lot of businesses down there that are against this. So we should also keep that in mind when, when we, when we're talking about expanding the hours for DORA. So if we expand the hours for DORA on Saturday, on Saturdays, that pretty much wipes out a lot of what people in recovery can do then also downtown, because they don't want to be around it. I'm in recovery myself, I have been for many years. Being around an environment like that, especially for people that are new in recovery, is, is not a good idea. One of the biggest problems that, and obstacles that people in recovery have is finding things to do that does not involve alcohol. I hear that all the time. One of the biggest complaints, what do I do? What do I do in recovery that doesn't involve alcohol? Think about that. That's a hard question to answer. There are things out there that, that they can do, but you've really got to search. So I hope that you vote not to expand the hours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Spiegel?
Good evening.
Welcome.
Paul Spiegel, 1970, Southwest Haven Drive. I'm here representing the Breakwater Coalition as the chair of it. Earlier today, I emailed all of you our statement on our position and our rationale behind it. And the number one reason I believe that this additional hour should not be approved is that less than a month ago, around a month ago, this council voted 7-0 to reduce those hours based on, I believe, Michael Ford's brought forth a amendment at that time to the DORA proposal. And I believe that he had spoken to people in recovery and had gotten their feelings. And I think there were issues related to being inclusive. So I, I stand here tonight thinking, how can two weeks into this, this group want to now change the rules and the game that's out there after you voted 7-0 unanimous to support reducing the hours on Saturday? I want to agree with the prior speaker, the, the farmer's market's been hugely, hugely successful, and it hasn't had to pander to alcohol to be successful. It's, it is one of the few family events that isn't based around alcohol. There are not a lot in this city. We continue to believe that we have to make alcohol available and more available, and it's going to wonderfully make our city more vibrant, and it's going to bring all these people downtown or wherever, and they're going to just spend all kinds of money, and our economy's going to flourish. That's a policy. And, but yet, we continue to ride that feeling of that horse, that we've got to do it. It's too bad. I think it would be nice if the organizations in this city that raise money, et cetera, would start to look at more things that don't have to have alcohol as the major purveyor of the event that they're, they're having. I'm not going to do, I think that a small part of the concern that we also had was that in the Aurora, in the initial DORA document, there indicated that there would be no Oshkosh OPD presence on Saturdays until 3:00 p.m. And I don't know if that's changed. I'll stand corrected if it is, but that was in the original document that described the DORA situation. I don't think that would go along with that. That means that it's a free-for-all and from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. potentially, there's no, there's no one watching the hen house, so to speak. And I, I think that the last thing I want to bring up again, and I brought it up the last time I was here, is we have a consequence to the amount of alcohol that is consumed in this city and in this state. There is a consequence. There's a monetary consequence to every one of us, to the tune of around $800 apiece. That $800 could be spent in a lot better ways than mitigating the damages done by people who binge drink or excessively drink. And that's really all I got to say. I'll take any questions. But I, again, speaking from our Breakwater Coalition, we, we really strongly oppose this change or this amendment to the, the DORA program. Thank you.
Mr. Spiegel?
Yeah.
If I could just ask a question, then, the gentleman that spoke before you indicated that he would no longer be offering that relapse prevention group on Thursday evenings because of the proximity and situation there. What other options would folks have with that absence?
I think you'd probably have to ask Mr. Mittelstadt on that. I'll be honest, it's not something I'm really aware of. It's too bad that, that that is what is happening. These are the things that I think were not talked about or discussed or looked into before this, this proposal was put forward. I don't think anyone, anybody, the bid or the owner of the Beckett's had any idea of any problems that might be created. They didn't look into it. They just came forward with, this is a great idea, do it. So I can't answer, maybe he can.
Are there other, other options besides that group on Thursday night? I'm sorry. I should have asked you.
Yes, I, I've got one other day that I can create an evening relapse prevention group on, on a Monday night, but I was hoping to keep that open for other things that are coming up. You know, there's a possibility that if I can't have that group on Thursday night, the clients may have to go somewhere else, and I may lose clients as well.
Did we already have our motion and a second to discuss?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Discussion.
I, I.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry. I, I understand your concerns, I really do, more than you know. But one thing I didn't take into consideration when I supported the hours is I didn't realize the farmer's market wanted to be part of this. And that, that's, that's 100% on me. I, I think it's the second or third most successful farmer's market in the state, and I got to think they know what they're doing. And talking with the people that are part of the farmer's market, they don't want this to be a drug fest. They're looking for somebody to carry a wine, a Bloody Mary, and walk down the street. And that was on me. I should have talked to them prior to this, that, prior to their request to be part of this. I did talk to our police department. They, they see zero issues with, with the 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. They, they just don't see any real big issues with that. So I, I just want to explain to you guys why I'm changing my position on that.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, thank you. And Councilman Miller, I mean, I don't think you, I don't think you need to apologize for not knowing that. The original email from the farmer's market indicated they were neutral. So you can be excused for that one.
Thanks.
But I, I'm sticking with the, our original decision, which we voted 7-0 a month ago, to keep the hours consistent from 5:00 to 9:00 on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday through the timeline of the pilot program. I appreciate that the farmer's market, as I just mentioned, sent an email out recently to change their stance from neutral to neutral, but welcoming it. And I'll gladly consider that as we decide what to do after the pilot ends. But there's a much larger issue here, I think, that, that bears discussion. I defended DORA as a unique way to activate public spaces. When folks contacted me, especially folks that were skeptical, saying this was all about drinking, I pushed back. I asked them to trust us, to view our willingness to compromise in particular on the pilot program as evidence of the honesty of our position. But I think if we vote yes on this action today, we're going to erode that trust. Instead of putting energy into making DORA work, instead of showing that we have a proof of concept that can inform future expansion and future decision-making, we're putting our energies into backtracking on a vote we took for our pilot program. I'd feel like a fool to ask those skeptical of this idea to trust me again, and frankly, I think people would be foolish to trust me again when I, I sing the merits of compromise. Our credibility matters up here. Our ability to trust one another is imperiled when we get in the habit of making decisions and immediately revisiting them. I understand that sometimes this is unavoidable, but here, we already have the expectation of revisiting this once the pilot expires in October. So it is 100% avoidable. I don't root for failure. This passes tonight, and I know it might. I'll respect the vote, and I hope it succeeds. I'll do my best to earn back the trust of those that feel alienated by this decision, and I think we all need to be doing that if we do vote yes on this today. But it is a shame, because this is a program that really could and should bring people together to derail this by choice, really puts the long-term viability of, of this as a concept that unifies us and does. a concept that unifies us and does not divide us in peril. And I just think it's remarkably short-sighted, and for that reason, I'll be voting no, and I urge my colleagues to do so. Thank you.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Mark, I don't know if you can answer this quite yet, but to your knowledge, have we had any reported issues yet with DORA? Or maybe the chief, have they gotten any reports or anything?
I think I'll defer to Chief Smith on that issue.
Problems?
Yeah. But I'm not aware of anything.
Well, so far for DORA, we've had approximately 16 interactions where we've had educational moments, where we've been able to talk to people about what the rules are, what the boundaries are, and they've been compliant. We did have, the first weekend of DORA, there was a hit-and-run that occurred, and the DORA officers on the beat were able to find the suspect vehicle. And the person who was the driver of the hit-and-run was arrested for felony OWI. We cut it short this past weekend due to the bad weather that came through. We really have had one weekend to really evaluate what happened.
Okay. I was just curious if we're talking about changing it. I just wanted to know that. So, thank you for that. I know, just speaking from personal anecdotal experience, participated in it, just to see in one of the, we did have an interaction with the police officers, just to, you know, see how it was going for them, if they've had any issues, and we had a pleasant interaction. So, I'm glad that was the case, because, you know, one of my concerns when we first talked about this was the police presence and whether that would, you know, deter people from wanting to be in that area. But I'm glad to see that that doesn't seem the case so far. There has been, and I understand the health's concerns, they are very valid. I just think that what we've seen so far and just the attitude towards it, there's been a lot of hysteria around it, whether this would result in pub crawls every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, trash everywhere, you know, lots of accidents, but that just hasn't been the case. And I think, I haven't decided whether I'll support this or not, but I don't believe that expanding it would cause too many more problems. I mean, people are already drinking during the farmer's market. They're outside, they're just on the sidewalks. I don't see the difference between someone drinking a lot at a bar and then coming outside without a drink, as opposed to them grabbing the drink and going right to the farmer's market. I think there's a lot of concerns that just haven't come to fruition. But, you know, I'm also okay with waiting for this to see how it ends at the end and then making a new decision on whether we want to expand it or not. So, those are just my thoughts.
Councilmember Erickson, and then Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I would say, I think I've been pretty clear on my stance on DORA since the beginning, but for me, this is really about, and thank you to those who've spoken and people in recovery who've spoken, for me, this is about, if we're going to pilot this, let's have consistent rules so that we can then in October kind of reexamine it at that point if we need to adjust. I think we can. But for me, it's about creating the conditions so that people, everyone in our community can feel safe at a family-friendly event. And I think people in recovery, you know, being able to have access to events that aren't, where alcohol is not visible and present all over the street, I think this is about balance. So, I think this is something, we made a decision two or four weeks ago, and I think we have to stick with it for the sake of having a consistent pilot.
Deputy Mayor, and then Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All my colleagues have made some very valid points across the full spectrum on the issue, but a couple stand out. And one, I happen to agree with Councilmember Wojciechowski, that if expanded, I don't believe that there's going to be any widespread issues. I don't see that occurring. Along with Councilmember Ford, though, four weeks ago, there was a compromise up here. For as much as people bemoan sometimes what we do up here and how often there's a 7-0 vote, and it seems like things are just pretty much rubber stamped, a compromise was formed on those councils four weeks ago while the public was watching, and without that compromise, it would not have passed, in my opinion. So, to Councilmember Ford's point, coming back a few weeks later, it's a bit disingenuous to the process. And process matters. So, I'm not sure where I'm at in this at the moment. I think I'm where Councilmember Wojciechowski kind of is at the moment. It's too early to really give it any, to really give it any sort of, you know, good, bad, or ugly. It's extremely early. So, I don't know that it's the right time to make a move on the hours yet.
Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I fully agree with you, Matt. My one reverb back to it is, if this is a pilot program, should we be piloting all of it and coming back to see it together? But other than that, I'm really divided and don't really know where to go with it right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
I'll just add that I think, you know, part of the point of having a pilot is to see how the program goes. I think my only concern is, you know, we won't know how it would work out for the farmer's market if we don't pilot it in the first place. So, you know, I don't know when the farmer's market exactly begins, but, you know, by the time this pilot ends, if we decide, you know, it went well, so let's bring it back, it's almost going to be like we're going to be repiloting it the next year when the farmer's market starts to see how it goes for that. So, I don't know. That's just another point I'm thinking about. If we want to see if it actually goes well at the farmer's market or not, we won't know until we test it.
Anybody else?
Well, I think I said a lot at the first council meeting where we were voting on this, but I'll just, I think, echo a bit about what Deputy Mayor brought up, and that is the process. Had there been other than, you know, one email that came through from one person that was suggesting that this was not adequate, there could have been an opportunity to revisit and reconsider that at the following council meeting. And it just seems that, you know, in the past, when council's been divided, we have agreed to disagree and moved on with our business. So, I will not be supporting it for that reason, along with the intent and the spirit of maintaining the farmer's market as a bit of a sober sanctuary. And that's all I have to say.
If nobody else has anything, well, please take the roll. Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
No.
Erickson?
No.
Ford?
No.
Mugrower?
No.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
No.
Motion fails, 5-2. All right, we'll move on to, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Resolution 22-335, approved preliminary plat for the creation of an 18-lot, single-family residential subdivision at the east end of Farmington Avenue. That's Farmington Codges. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So, move.
Second. Any discussion? Has anybody had a chance to go look at the first one that's been built?
Oh, this is a brand-new plat. This is a preliminary plat, so nothing has been built yet.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Codges.
I'm thinking of the cottages. Excuse me. I just got so excited. And they withstood the storm. Mr. Lyons, could you share a little summary?
Sure. This is the third step in the project that we've been working on out on Farmington Avenue. If council recalls, we had previously done a comp plan amendment and then a zone change to provide a new subdivision, our first SR9 subdivision we've had in the city since adoption of our new code, and really, our first smaller-lot subdivision we've had in a significant amount of time in this city. Most of our newer subdivisions are more of the suburban-style subdivisions with, you know, 20,000-square-foot lots, 15,000-square-foot lots. This is our first smaller-lot residential subdivision that we've had, with an applicant kind of targeting a varied style of houses, some on 40-foot lots, some on 60-foot lots, some on a little bigger lots, trying to mix in some density into this development to bring a different, lower price point of home into our market. This is the preliminary plat, which is just the first step in the plating process according to the state statutes. If council was adopted, the applicant would then move on to finalizing their plan, going through the engineering documents necessary, finalizing the parkland dedication and all of that, with hopefully targeting potentially pushing dirt by the end of the year. So, we're just kind of slowly been working through this project with developer and trying to bring something kind of new and unique that we haven't done before.
But this is actually part of our recommendations in the housing study. So, congratulations, you're already implementing our housing study by approving these smaller lots.
Yes, that is exciting. Is there an average, maybe I missed it in the staff memo, average size of these units?
Of the actual homes or of the lots?
Yes, the homes.
So, we don't have any home plans yet. This is just the subdivision plating of the land into the lots.
Okay, so we're not at that point.
Yeah.
A little premature.
The applicant had talked about, you know, single-family ranch homes in the 1,000 to 1,200-square-foot range, which is obviously less than we see in a lot of the newer subdivisions, I'd say, the west side of town.
More back to that kind of Sears home size, right?
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Well, it is exciting to see off and running some of those recommendations from the housing study right away. Very good. Thank you. We can please call the roll. Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven. All right. Our next new resolution is approve revised amendment of city ward maps to comply with legislative district boundaries.
So, we actually haven't changed any of the districts since the last time you saw this. However, this just clarifies what we call district combos. So, we have several districts that we only actually have to divide for specific races. Like, if there's a school district race, a couple of the wards have to be divided because they're in different school districts. Or if there is a sanitary district race on the ballot, then a couple of the wards have to be divided due to that. So, this just lays it out a little more clearly so people can understand that if you're in 22A and/or 22ASD, sanitary district, you'd vote in 22A if there isn't anything sanitary district on the ballot. So, just lays it out a little more clearly, but they're the same districts. So, hopefully, this is the last time I bring it to you in quite some time.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion or questions? Right, please call the roll. Oh, wait, we need a motion in a second.
I'll move. Second.
Sorry. Any further discussions? Cleaning up those maps. All right, please call the roll. Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven. Okay, we're at council discussion and direction to city manager and future agenda items. Close session after, on August 10th, 2022. Are we all available?
August 10th is your regular, regular council day, Wednesday, so just clarifying that because of election day.
And as I understand it, 30B is pulled because, or is no longer relevant, that public hearing regarding the suspension and revocation of the Class B for Fox Valley pro basketball?
That is correct. The tax bill was paid this afternoon.
Okay. All right. Do we need to do any kind of procedural motion on that, Lynn?
No.
All right. Future meetings. Arpa allocations for non-infrastructure purposes.
My goal is to have, excuse me, my goal is to have some recommendations to you at the next meeting. It won't be exhaustive to the $5 million that's been allocated for non-infrastructure, but I'll be making some preliminary recommendations.
Counsel, have any more questions on that? Okay, and then, virtual option for meetings. This kind of has been batted around back and forth.
It's a, I just left it on there to let you know, we're still working on it. DEI talked about it last night, and staff has met to go through the various options that are, there's a lot more options than just yes or no. There's a lot in between, so we're working on that. I'm not prepared to make a recommendation or give you an analysis at this time, but I've got it on there just to keep me honest.
Do you need anything else from us at this time?
I don't believe so. I think there was a good discussion at the last meeting, and we've got to go through some things to, it's, there are going to be additional costs depending on different options, depending on where the council lands on this.
Is by chance one of those options, there was an email that we got that made a recommendation of this 360 camera that didn't necessarily need staffing, but it would require storage?
That is one of those being discussed, yeah.
All right, and Clearwell Workshop, August 23. Oh, it's been a while on that one.
So, we'll be prepared for August 23rd. We'll figure out where we want to do that. Do we want to do a 5 o'clock, or do we want to do an in-meeting workshop on that?
Will there be new news?
Yes, yeah, the DNR has received information from us, but I think they're still doing some analysis. James can give you a little bit of insight. But, yeah, there's, we'll be giving you an update. We've done the analysis, so it's now going through the process.
We have completed the inspections and submitted the inspection reports to the DNR, and we are currently in the process of scheduling a meeting to get some guidance and clarification from DNR prior to our workshop with you, so that we can bring that information from the DNR as a part of our workshop discussion.
Thanks. So, based on that, we'll get a feel on how long we think it'll be, and then give you some options. Probably the next meeting, we'll say, do you want to go early, you want to go in-meeting, that type of thing.
And our second budget workshop is August 30th. What time do we have for that?
Fifth Tuesday, 5 o'clock.
Tuesday at 5. Everyone good on that time? So, we have another item here. I had asked about central city residential parking. So, in the last couple of weeks, a couple of folks in the central city have brought to my attention, and I didn't recall this, that there is a limitation on the number of permits that can be purchased throughout the city. It is permissible, as I understand it, and what's posted on the police department, but there are restrictions and rations or quotas within the central city mapped area. And if Chief Smith wouldn't mind coming up and talking about that, because there are some concerns about equity and year-round residents not having access to the same amenities throughout the rest of the city.
Well, you are correct that parking permits, they are generally unlimited through most of the city, except for the central city parking area that's designated within city ordinance. Those are only allowed to have nine-month permits, and there's not really a quota. There's a limitation as to how many parking spaces there are. So, there is a defined, for each street has a defined amount of spaces available for parking. Previously, we had received complaints from the university that there wasn't enough parking for university students. So, make it, to make it fair and equitable for everybody, we went to a nine-month permitting that occurs in September to purchase your nine-month permit. In reading your email, you had considered allowing year-round residents to have preference or treatment for those permits, and there's really no, there's no really way to differentiate a year-round resident from a nine-month resident. We have some college kids that do live here year-round. But more importantly, to your point, there is a solution that's being worked on by one of our vendors for an online permitting through Duncan Solutions, and we're just waiting for that company to complete their work on that application.
So, what's really interesting about this, and perhaps this is something that we can place on a future agenda, is that it looks to be all of Census Track 7 and part of Census Track 5, which are the two densest, densely populated areas in the city where there are the least city where there are the least amount of parking spaces. And so perhaps there's another solution. I know that there was a downtown parking study done, oh gosh, first year I was on council, I think was the end of it, 2016, and it was found that downtown didn't have a parking problem, we had a walking problem. So I guess, you know, just concerned that we are, in the rest of the city where it's less densely built, there are obviously longer lengths of street and more spots available for fewer people, and it's the inverse. So is this something that council would be interested in having on a future agenda to look at a little more detailed? Councilmember Miller?
Thanks. I guess I'm lost as to what, what you're asking, so I, I.
So.
No, I understand that, but, but, no, I understand the map and everything, but what, who is, who is getting, who is not being included in this, I guess is my question.
Sure, sure. So basically, what it says is your zip code determines whether or not you're going to get the ability to park on the street, okay, your census tract, because they are a carve-out that prevents a year-round parking permit from being purchased. And the rest of the city, the donut, right, can purchase those. This is a smaller amount of parking spaces, a smaller amount of land, but a larger number of people. So what we have right now is fewer served by more spaces, with that donut hole being the reverse. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Maybe?
No, but how, how long has this been going on, Chief? How long has this, this system been going on?
Longer than I've been here, but I know that it predates many of my folks that are currently on the department. This system has been in place, and I, I could venture a guess, but I couldn't give you an accurate number.
So who, I guess, so who can't get, get a parking space in this area?
So anyone who lives on any of these streets, okay, where you have smaller driveways, shorter driveways, and larger homes that may have more than one vehicle.
So why, like, I guess, why can't they get a parking?
They can't, it's, they're not allowed to get a, an annual pass. They're only allowed to get a nine-month pass, is that?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. And Mr. Lyons, do you recall, I'm sorry, what year the university transition overlay was implemented? Was that like 2014, 2015, somewhere in there?
But, but anybody living in that area can get a pass, correct? I mean.
Not a year-round pass, though.
No, but nobody can get one, right? Nobody in that area can get a year-round pass?
You cannot get a year-round pass to park in that area.
Okay. So we're not discriminating against any?
They're, to give you an example, in the four, five, in the 6, 5, and 4 on a block of Amherst, there's a total of eight, there's 11 parking spots available on Amherst. And we, we work it on a first-come, first-served basis as it relates to the parking sales. Once we sell 11 permits for that street, then you're no longer able to get a permit for that street. Anybody can come to the police department and get a permit.
Okay, so we, anybody can, anybody that, that.
That's physically able to stand in line for four hours in September, when there's a line of college students ahead of you that got there first.
That's, that's correct.
But the, the solution to that piece is the online ability to purchase the permit. So it goes live at, I don't know, midnight on September 1st. Whoever's first went in online can get that now.
It'd be like buying a concert ticket for a sold-out concert.
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep. So, for example, a gentleman, disabled veteran, brought this to my attention, that he had this experience, and I know that other folks in some of the central city neighborhoods have expressed their frustration with having to, you know, purchase the permit and not necessarily getting a space because of the lack of parking. But what I'm trying to say is, does, does council have an interest in revisiting or referring this out to plan commission or traffic to reexamine how this structure provides or restricts folks who are living in Census Track 5 and 7?
So the, the online system will solve the problem of waiting in line? Is that?
Once it get, once the software actually gets wrote, then you will no longer have to wait in line. You, you no longer physically have to wait in line, you would be in a queue basically from, from the online system.
Deputy Mayor?
So, Chief, how often do we run out of passes? And I, that's a loaded question because there's so many streets, but I'm trying to figure out if we're creating a problem just to have discussion, or if we actually have a problem here.
I really couldn't give you a fair, a fair, a fair number on that. I don't have that data to talk about that, but there are finite amount of passes, just, there just are.
Sure. And so you may not have this answer because it predates you, and maybe this is just where council can just receive some more information before giving any guidance, because right now it's just, nobody knows anything. What's the rationale behind the only nine-month permit compared to the 12-month everywhere else?
It's my understanding that initially, before this was enacted within the ordinance, it was basically anybody and everybody could come in and get a parking permit for that particular area. It was, but then the designated area was, was designed out of the interest of the university because they were, they had a concern about the university students not able to have parking. And that's where the nine-month permit came into play, available from September to June, thereabouts.
Okay. So talking about a piece of software, while it may say, it may, may solve the wait-in-line issue, the physical wait-in-line issue, it doesn't, if there is an actual problem, and I'm not sure that there is one yet, but if it, the actual issue would be that there's just not enough parking. That's the real issue, if I'm hearing one.
I would agree with you.
Okay.
We, we do a lot of parking enforcement, as you probably were. We have two to five parking employees that they, they go throughout the city, and their job is simply to write parking tickets. That's all they do. They're looking for permits, they're, they're looking for violations, and they're, they're trying to enforce the city's parking ordinances. And they're, they're, they write a lot of parking tickets.
Except that there is one thing that hasn't been talked about here, and that is that the university has a parking structure that is accessible by faculty and students, but is not accessible by the general folks who are off-campus in those neighborhoods. So there is a central condensed number of parking, and I don't know if we count those in our mix or not.
I couldn't answer that for you.
Right. So Mr. Lyons, did you, did you say what year the UTO went in effect?
So the current version of the UTO went in in 2017, when we updated the ordinance, I don't, I know it looks like Ms. Nyforth was trying to look as well. I do not recall what year the original version that got adopted prior to us rolling it into the general ordinance was, but I happened to kind of look that up and get to council.
Okay. Councilmember Wojciechowski?
Thank you. I think Matt put it great, that's kind of what I was thinking. It sounds like this is more of a structural problem and not having enough parking, and if you've been on the campus or attended there as a student or faculty, you know that there is very limited parking there, very much undersaw what their student population is. And I just hate to think that anytime the university is involved, it's all of a sudden a problem, that people are having, you know, it, it is fair, you know, you, college students need parking spots too, and the fact that they need to move on to the city, you know, is an issue with infrastructure at the school itself, but, you know, they live in Oshkosh, they should be able to have that same opportunity that other residents here have. But one of my questions was, so you said it's a six-month, it starts in September and roughly.
Nine months.
Nine months, sorry. So those three months that it doesn't cover, then are people allowed to get passes for those three months, or how does that work?
Standby.
So it is.
That was, that was a curveball for me. Oh, let's see.
So it says the nine-month is available, the annual is available, and there is a monthly. If you purchase it after the 15th, it's $5, otherwise it's $10, so.
So for those three months, someone would have to pay just for the month?
There is a three-month permit that's available as well.
Oh, it's, that's not on the.
For the, for the, for the central city parking area.
Oh, okay, so, so that is an option too, because that, I'm thinking that covers the time when school is out of session, so.
Correct. And that, that gives whomever's there the option to have parking there as well.
And I guess that's what I was trying to get at in, in this follow-up for the, the citizens' request, is why, if you live in that area and those streets, would you have to purchase a nine-month and a three-month if you are a year-round resident as opposed to being able to buy? It doesn't change the number of parking spots, so that's what's like confusing.
It allows, from my understanding, it allows students at the college to have equal access to parking, as opposed to if it was year-round, then those passes might never be available to begin with for the college students who need to take up that extra space.
When they live there.
Yeah. When they live there. Because if, if it was a year-round pass, then the college students would never have an opportunity to get a pass in the first place, because they would probably all be taken up by the time they came back for school. So that's what it sounds like, why it's a nine-month.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I just see a, I'm just thinking that's a high-density rental area, too. I'm just seeing if it's a 12-month pass, there's an opportunity for a little monopoly with maybe some of the landlords there, Chief, where maybe the landlord buys a 12-month pass and buys several of.
There is a potential to that. We do have a rule in place that it's one pass per vehicle, only two passes per individual can be purchased, but at 2:00 in the morning, our parking enforcement person is looking for passes, they're not necessarily, you know, trying to find that, that license plate number. It becomes a very difficult enforcement option for us to try to make sure that we're, we're doing our passes correctly. It doesn't mean we can't do it, it just becomes more difficult.
So does anybody happen to know how many spaces are available in the parking structure at UWO? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Hansen.
Is there an option to purchase a three-month and a nine-month at the same time to cover an entire year?
No.
So they don't have to sit in line, like you're talking to the disabled, no?
I don't believe there is, no.
Would it be hard to make that a possibility?
Well, then you're, you're selling a 12-month permit then. You're doing, you're doing the same thing.
Yeah.
You can just do a 12-month permit and.
To make it more accessible. If she's saying that a concerned citizen who is disabled is coming around, say they want to purchase an entire year, or have the option open for the nine-month for the college students, so then he can at least get the three months and not have to stop in twice. Just throwing it out.
Again, that, you can just designate a 12-month permit, not, it, it's the same-dollar amount. It's designated for that nine months that we have, that period for, to buy that one permit, and it, and it self-cancels itself at the end of that nine months, and then you have to buy another permit.
I guess I just wanted to add too, that, you know, one of the things that we did to try and reduce the cost of building multifamily housing, because, you know, developers are indicating that they, you know, wanted to get those costs down, was to reduce the amount of parking required. So we've built a significant number of units downtown in the last two years. How many total, Ms. Nyforth, would you say? Several hundred? Yeah. So that addition of the housing units and the reduction of the parking in those requirements has also spilled over and started to create fewer available spots for these folks who are maneuvering back and forth, if that makes sense.
As I'm, as, if I may, Mayor, as I've been listening to the discussion, an idea popped into my mind. You, you indicated that a, a handicapped person, disabled person had came to you and said that they had a problem. Maybe you consider doing a special permit for disabled persons.
And that was one of the questions that was asked.
They have to, if you have disabled tags.
Yep.
You have a disabled permit, and maybe that's an option.
So you could designate some of those spots as disabled parking?
That's an option.
Yeah, that, that's why I was saying, you know, is, is council willing to, I guess, refer this out to Traffic and Parking Board to flush this out? It's, it's not a matter of looking for a problem. There have been folks who have said that by the time they got up to the line, there were no more left, and they have to wait until September to figure out if they have someplace to park during the winter. Councilmember Wojciechowski?
Yeah, I'm fine with them looking at it, I just don't think that the permit process is the problem. I just think, you know, and this is not a unique issue to us, you know, as we grow and expand and downtown becomes more dense, you know, we'll need more parking. So I really think the bigger issue to be looked at, and I know this will be fixed with the online system, so that's why I'm not as worried about the permit system, but I just think we need more parking, and I think that would solve a lot of these issues. But that's obviously a big money attached to.
Councilmember Ford, and then city manager.
Yeah, I don't see the need. I think this is a function of density in our central city. That's what happens in central cities.
City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd be happy to talk to Mr. Collins and, you know, collect some information, because there's a lot of questions being asked without a ton of answers, so, you know, this is something the mayor just brought up a week or two ago, so happy to have staff take a look at it and just kind of report back, perhaps refer it to Mr. Collins and see if the, if the committee has discussed this. I, I don't know how much the committee has discussed this.
All right, thank you. All right, we are at council member announcements and statements. Does anyone have anything to report? Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, and I did look at the agenda mark under your comments, so if you were planning on it, I think you forgot, but it's the beginning of EA, so I just wanted to welcome everybody to our fair city, so you want to take it from there?
I don't know if I have to. We did multiple flyover tributes at the beginning of the meeting, so, yeah, I think, I think even the people listening tonight could see that. So, yeah, we're very happy to, seems like the turnout has been very good. I know Ms. Nyforth was out there promoting Oshkosh today at the booth that's being staffed by CVB, GoEDC, city staff.
Airport.
Airport, a lot of, a lot of good collaboration, we're really happy about it.
I just have one item, and that's Bike and Ped, Bike and Pedestrian Committee met jointly with traffic, thanks to planning and other folks bringing forward another twiddle coming to your city on the south side, some recommendations, and that will be coming to council shortly. And we're at city manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a handful of items that are in your agenda packet, three cooperative purchases for vehicles that are in the 2022 budget. Fortunately, those vehicles are available, which is not always something we can say these days, so we're, we're happy to see that. A couple professional services agreements, getting ready for, planning for our 2023 capital projects. We do some advanced work so that the design process that goes on through the winter can get done fairly soon, so we're happy to do that. I'm going to turn over to Ms. Nyforth to give a brief presentation or a brief summary of Nomo May report and what our experience and observations are so far.
Excellent, thank you. In the agenda, I do have a letter or just a report of some observations, some of the, you know, the facts and the numbers that came out of Nomo May. If you remember, it was very successful. We had 655 properties that registered in the city of Oshkosh, so a really good turnover on our website, and about 50 properties were from outside, but I think they just, they still wanted to participate, so they still went on our website and listed their property. So what we did is we took a look, you know, in 2021, we didn't require registration, so we looked at previous years just to see if there was any impact. So, you know, one thing we did try to do this year was just more education. We tried to work with Oshkosh Media on social media to get the word out more on how to sign up, and we tried to make it as easy as possible. So I do have some numbers in here, you know, we took a look at like June, so like that month after Nomo May, when technically the, they should have been mowing their lawns by then. So in June of '21, there was 167 follow-up inspections compared to June of this year, there was 323. So we definitely saw more, you know, follow-up inspections required, there was a lot more, you know, activity and everything. So from the people that signed up for the Nomo May on the list, there was only nine there was only nine of them, though, that did get that violation. So the people that did sign up did, you know, appear to have good intentions. And come June 1st, we actually started sending staff out June 6th, so we gave them a little extra time. It did appear that they did mow their lawns, and they did take care of, you know, that growth that happened over the month of May. But what we are seeing is, you know, we did have a lot more properties where streets had to be sent out. Last year was 43, this year it was 66. And when we were talking to folks, we did hear that there was still some confusion where people did think that they didn't have to sign up. What their intention was, that they're trying to get out of it, or if they really didn't know, I don't know. But we did have a lot of people that, you know, thought they were participating in Nomo May, and that was the reason, you know, why their grass was high. So, you know, we'll continue, if this is something that moves forward next year, we'll continue to look for ways to improve that communication and work with folks to make sure that they know they have to sign up so they do not get a violation notice.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we're coming up on three years here that I've been on the council. But this is by far the number-one item that I get my you-know-what chewed out about publicly. It's so funny, out of all the controversial issues and things going on in the city, I get slaughtered for this come June. So it's by far the most complaints I get over Nomo May, by far. So I think we really need to take a look at this just from the sheer number of purely unhappy people. So, thank you.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
So I noticed in some of the stats, the 66 properties that were sent to streets, it says 47% of rentals.
Right.
And I know when they felt the application process, and I don't know if you have this or if this could be part of that, whether it is a responsibility of the renters or the owner to mow the lawn.
We did not ask that, but that is something we could certainly look at because there were some where it was a different name signed up than the owner.
Okay.
So we did see that. So whose responsibility, though, to mow during the month?
And I know sometimes that's an issue just in general outside of Nomo May. So maybe a question to ask in the future, so it's, they're clear on who's the one who has to take care of it once Nomo May ends.
Right.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One question and one maybe suggestion. Noted in here, four of the 66 properties that were cut by streets were actually registered for Nomo May.
That is correct.
Can we just confirm that we didn't bill them? Because if streets was cutting it, then we were sending an invoice, right?
Yeah, so that means that by June 6th, when we were going out, they still had not cut their lawns. So that was later in June. You know, we have, like, you know, we have, like?
My misunderstanding, then.
Yep, usually five business days, we give them to come into compliance.
Okay, my misunderstanding, then. I know last, what, last May, this basically came to us, just straight to us, didn't go to Sustainability. Is there any thought, or are you planning on sending this information to Sustainability so that they can discuss this and actually make a recommendation to us regarding this?
Absolutely.
And then, as well as maybe they can think of other alternatives in case this doesn't go through, that they can do other outreach? Because there are other beneficial things that could come from this if this doesn't go forward.
Yes, we will be sharing it with SAB.
Perfect, thank you.
Speaking of SAB, but first of all, just curious, under the 17% that was other? So if 26% of the people who were cited and the city went out to cut, only 26% were owner-occupied, 10% abandoned, 47% rentals, what would be other? Would that be, like, commercial, institutional?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, all right. And for some reason, I was under the impression, and maybe I read about this somewhere else, I thought this had gone through SAB, and there was perhaps a recommendation about bringing it to council as permanent. Am I mistaken?
I am?
I might be thinking of another city.
It may, yeah. I'm not familiar. I don't know, Councilor Wojciechowski?
Not that I'm aware of. I know they've been talking about other ideas for yards and stuff like that, but I don't recall.
The native?
Yeah, other things like that, too.
Okay. Mark was just saying potentially the first year they did discuss it, so that would be in 2021.
And it was, let's see how it goes, and then we'll bring it back.
Right.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I know a lot of gardeners who are very, very happy with Nomo May, and I will be one of them because of the fact that it does contribute to the health of the gardens and the pollinators, spread their wealth, as Councilmember Miller, who's a beekeeper.
I'm not sure if I'm a good one, but yes.
So, yes. And then we have a new neighborhood association to recognize.
Yes, this is really exciting. Sorry.
No, no, I'd be stealing your thunder if I talked anyway. You go right ahead.
This is truly a situation where we made lemonade out of lemons. We had some neighbors that had some concerns with the development going on in their neighborhood. And staff was out there quite a bit. Councilor Ford was with Mark Lyons and I. And at that meeting, we just said, you know, the group of neighbors were very close. You could tell they communicated well. We said, why don't you guys set up a neighborhood association? You know, you pretty much are there already. And so they started working with Go HNI on creating one. And so we do have the new Green Acres Neighborhood Association. And they are working with the new residents of the development next to them and actually meeting in their clubhouse. So it's a good story, you know, having folks come together and, you know, plan events and initiatives in their neighborhood and work together on that.
And I guess that's a really good segue that we might have overlooked. August 2nd, National Neighbor Night. Now, 14 neighborhood associations back with the block parties.
Yeah.
And we do have a public notice in case multiple councilmembers show up.
We're all traveling in the same van, I think.
I see Mr. Fotek is here from Go HNI. Do you want to add any special news to that announcement?
Just to second what Kelly said about the Green Acres. First of all, the person that came up with the name clearly was chronologically advantaged. And I pointed that out to him when he came up with it, but it's wonderful. But it really was a result of the city planning staff and city staff sort of nudging them in this direction. They were able to hand it off to us, and we were able to do it. As for August 2nd, it's also really nice collaboration. It's really the police force, fire department. It's just been really, really nice. And I just want to point out that Miller's Bay will be celebrating their 10th anniversary on August 2nd. So they're going to have a special event out there, too. So, and they've already got the proper permit, so they're good. But, so there's a lot of good stuff going on here.
Yes, that partnership with the police department. And I think the fire department tried to steal their thunder by jumping in there.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, just real quick, I want to shout out, Kelly's underselling herself, as is Mark and the planning staff and the work you did there. I mean, they were, seriously, I mean, that was an incredible, incredible job you did, taking some very serious concerns, not only addressing the concerns that that neighbor's had, but then directing them into something really positive. And just really awesome to see. Very well done.
Thank you.
Couldn't have said it better myself. I'll finish up mine. The second quarter strategic plan report is online. Certainly encourage council members to take a look at it. We're happy about that. Outstanding issues is there. I really don't have anything to point out in this edition unless you have any questions. And I know we've got a closed session, so I certainly don't want to take any more of your valuable time.
All right, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Nope.
Can we do the?
I'm sorry, motion for closed session.
Yes, we have four of them, please.
For your benefit, you can run them together. It doesn't need to be four separate motions.
Fantastic. Bear with me while I read a couple pages here. I move, following the adjournment of this meeting, the council may convene into closed session to discuss bargaining options, strategy, parameters, and terms related to the negotiation of agreements for the TID 25 City Center Hotel with Oshkosh Investors LLC and OI Management Corporation pursuant to Section 19.85 Parent 1E of the Wisconsin State Statutes, where competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session. I also move, following the adjournment of this meeting, the council may convene into closed session to discuss bargaining options, strategy, parameters, and terms related to the negotiation of agreements for TID 43 T-WALL Development with the Mill on Main LLC pursuant to Section 19.85 Parents 1E of the Wisconsin State Statutes, where competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session. I also move, following the adjournment of this meeting, the council may convene into closed session pursuant to Section 19.85 Parents 1E of the Wisconsin State Statutes, where competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session and Section 19.85 Parents 1G of the Wisconsin State Statutes to confer with legal counsel, who will render advice concerning strategy to be adopted with respect to litigation in which the city is likely to become involved related to the Algoa Sanitary District, and discuss bargaining options, strategy, parameters, and terms related to the negotiation of a master sanitary sewer agreement with the Algoa, Sunset Point, Island View, Edwood, Shangri-La, Winbago Area, and Black Wolf sanitary districts pursuant to Section 19.85 Parents 1E of the Wisconsin State Statutes, where competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session. And finally, I move, following the adjournment of this meeting, the council may convene into closed session to discuss pursuant to Section 19.85 Parents 1G of the Wisconsin State Statutes to confer with legal counsel concerning strategy to be adopted with respect to litigation with regard to the proposed fee to replace special assessments.
Sorry, was there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Nope.
I'm sorry, no, roll call.
Roll call. Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.